Let's go ahead and get the show on the road here. I believe.
You are. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to welcome some folks who do our invocation today, and this is a little different for us. I would like to welcome Pastor Quincy Griffin from Family Worship and Praise Center. He is one of the mentors and part of the Worship with Me program that we heard about last. Sorry about that. I didn't want to cough into the microphone or anything. We heard about the Sheriff's All-in Initiative last month and the Worship with Me program particularly, that it helps connect at-risk youth with places of worship. So we have two young ladies, very brave here to give our invocation, and I would like to welcome Ms. Rashika Bryant and Janesia Williams to come to the podium. Please stand.
Dear God, give us strength to this journey on travel roads of life. Give us wisdom and insight to prosper in your light during this journey. Lord, you know every decision we need to make and every challenge we face. Please forgive us for the times we've tried to figure this life out on our own. We need you. We need your Holy Spirit to give us strength, wisdom, and direction. We pray that we will be better at decision-making, management, and taking care of things. Please help us grow in this area that we may be wise people as we represent you.
Heavenly Father, we pray for every city leader, that even though they may face obstacles and go through tough times, that their eyes will be fixed on you. Give them knowledge to help fix our city in every possible way. We pray they will be thoughtful in their decisions and listen to the voices of the community. And God, protect, guide, and keep the young kids of our community safe. Guide them in the path of righteousness so that they can live up to your name. I pray that your word will fill their minds and their hearts. May they come to you, that you are the way, the truth, and the light. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
That was a great opening prayer. Appreciate that. Okay, Commissioner Dozier, you're up.
Unplanned, but it just happens that we come off of two wonderful young ladies who offered our invocation. Thank you both again. To a proclamation for Paloma Rambona, who was here with us last month. So this is going to be slightly different. I would like to welcome Paloma to join me. And I would also like to ask Lady Diana Ziegler, a Commissioner with the Florida Commission on the Status of Women, and Kelly Skiba, our Executive Director for the Commission, to join me. We have a county proclamation in Paloma's honor, but the catalyst for this was actually a special recognition from the Commission. So I'm going to turn it over to Lady Ziegler right now to give that introduction. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for allowing me to join in this special celebration today. As Commissioner Dozier said, I am a Commissioner with the Florida Commission on the Status of Women. And Kelly Skiba is joining me today, who is our Executive Director. And just to give you a little background, the Commission was created by the Florida Legislature in 1991 to identify, study, and address the unique needs of women in our state. The Commission has 22 members who are appointed by the Florida Governor, Cabinet, President of the Senate, and Speaker of the House of Representatives. Our Commissioners come from all areas of the state, and they have different professional backgrounds. They've made it their mission to recognize and support women of all ages to achieve their fullest potential. Since 1999, the Commission has recognized numerous dedicated individuals throughout Florida for their contributions to their community. Each year, we seek nominations of notorious women, men, and youth who have improved the lives of Florida women and families and who serve as positive role models for women and girls. The recipients of the FCSW Spirit of Community Awards are the embodiment of dedicated community service. Each day, these volunteers mentor children, advocate for women and families, and help to make our loved ones healthier. They make our communities and our state a much better place. I've been with the Commission to 2004, since 2004, and most recently served as Commission Chair. I must say that award presentations are the best part of my job. Learning about the dedicated service and personal stories of those we honor always leaves me amazed at the tremendous impact they make over time in the communities they serve. Over the years, I've discovered that volunteers don't necessarily have the time, but they have the heart, so they find the time. Mother Teresa once said, "Love cannot remain by itself; it has no meaning." Love has to be put into action, and that action is service. Today, we are proud to be honoring one of our special young people, Paloma Rambona, for her passion and service to visually impaired children and their families. Paloma has dedicated her young life to lobbying efforts on behalf of these children. She has firsthand experience in this area, being legally blind herself. She has spoken tirelessly to audiences to raise funds, to address support services, so children can learn independent living and academic skills. She has been instrumental in raising over $1.2 million in funding thus far. Yes. That is awesome, awesome. And it is for that reason that the Commission recognized Paloma Rambona with the Florida Commission on the Status of Women Spirit of Community Award. Congratulations, and thanks for all you do. You are awesome.
And a letter from the Governor?
And a letter from the Governor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service on the Commission, and Kelly, for all you do. I am not going to repeat the really wonderful words that Diana just provided us about the Commission and about this special award. The proclamation mirrors that a good bit. I did want to highlight two things. Paloma has also written a memoir, Paloma's Dream: The Story of One Girl's Mission to Help Kids Inspire Activism and Survive Middle School. Very helpful. And she was profiled in so many different places, but one that stands out is O., the Oprah Winfrey Magazine, and named as one of the 11 Everyday Heroes Who Bring Healthcare to Those in Need. Paloma is a true champion, and I think this day is extra special because she introduced, along with two of her friends, my interns from last summer, the Leon County Page Program at our last meeting, and that program is on our consent agenda. So her fingerprints are even on Leon County's work today. So graduation, Paloma, to her parents, Neil, you're over there, and Elizabeth, Lynn, sister, always in her own right, doing amazing things in our community. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. It's incredibly amazing to be up here again. I was here last month, again, post promoting this page program that's come so far, and I'm glad that I got to be a part of it. And I'm just honored to be here after the amazing women that have come before me and that are going to continue to come after me. Thank you so much for this and for every day being a part of an amazing community. Thank you.
Congratulations. Ramsey, I think you're up next. EFA Educational Facilities Authority update. While Ramsey's coming up, I want to just take a quick moment. He's a volunteer Board Chair of the Educational Facilities Authority. I want to thank him for his expertise. He has really, him and Michael Kramer have really made a difference in the last couple of years.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it.
I just want to spend a few minutes talking a little bit about how we originated and a little bit about the history and where we are today. Twenty-plus years ago, the authority was created to act as a conduit issuer. It's led by a volunteer board, as Brian just mentioned. And we weren't really originally intended to get involved in the development, acquisition, and operation of student housing facilities. Well, we ended up doing that over time. I joined the board, this is my third year now. I've been working with a number of other board members, and over the last couple of years, we've worked pretty hard to rectify the two projects that we had been involved in, both of which had run into some trouble, South Gate being one and Heritage Grove being the other. We feel like today, we are in very good shape with both of those projects. We are still involved, however, to a much lesser extent in both of them, and within two to three years, we feel like we will have pretty good resolution on all those projects. I'm really happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? It's a, this is a kind of an animal that we created years ago that oftentimes gets lost in the shuffle, and it's a little complicated, but, I mean, they've taken, as Ramsey pointed out, we, you know, really not in the real, we found ourselves in the real estate business, and so slowly, we're working our way out of it effectively. They've done a nice job in a very complicated and very trying kind of environment as far as, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to take a quick second to thank you for your leadership on that board, and point us in the right direction. There were some good people who could come in and bring some organization to what was a mess, quite frankly, a few years ago. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for coming in and serving, and this report that you gave today is the best news that we got from the EFA in a long time. So to know we're moving in the right direction, and the board feels comfortable in the direction that we're moving is a good thing. So thank you so much.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Sims, just wanted to recognize, I've known Ramsey from his time serving as a Board President of Second Harvest of Big Bend, and I'm no longer on that, with that organization. And Ramsey, I think you've rolled off the board by now.
No, still on it.
But I can attest to Mr. Sims' qualifications, outstanding community leader, and brings a lot of hard work and expertise to the effort. So thank you for being here.
Thanks, Rick. And you're one of the few people that can talk the talk in the whole bond reef. So we are thankful for your leadership. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, and we're going to take the next proclamation and actually move it to 6:00 PM. So the Pam Hall proclamation, I'm just going to use chairman's prerogative, we're going to take that at 6:00. So we will, we have citizens to be heard, unengageded?
First up is consent.
Consent, let's do consent.
We have no consent items, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion, we have a second on consent. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right.
Mr. Chairman, we do have several speakers to be heard on non-agenda items. First, Martha Roberts.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on a non-agenda item, and I'm speaking in opposition of you putting the Children's Services Council on the ballot. As such, I am so pleased at what you have accomplished, along with people like Paloma and others on the volunteer and also the Commission-funded projects. And I commend you, quite frankly, for having a workshop yesterday that I read in the paper where you looked at different items, and you looked at the metrics and the budget that you had spent on those items. But this would be creation of a non-elected commis, council. The only place I really differ from the report given to you in December, which had many good points in it, but I disagree that it is accountable and it has proper oversight. As a non-elected body, you have authority, and you agreed to put this on the ballot, but I respectfully ask that you consider that you don't have a budget of items. The council would have taxing authority up to half a mil, which they've estimated to be $8 million, which may be more since that was calculated. And as such, you have such authority within your own commission. I think that you would have great support for some of the items identified in the feasibility study. You might want to, for instance, it was identified that there was some lack of ability in math learning. You might want to perhaps certify some project for some additional training for some of the math teachers in some of our schools. But I'm delighted that the Florida report lists Leon County as 16th in children's services and accomplishments in the state out of 67 counties. That doesn't mean we shouldn't ascribe to be higher. I would hope to be in the top 10. But I respectfully request that you not have this on the ballot until such time that you have a proper budget before you, and that you see that a lot of this information and a lot of the items identified in the feasibility study could be done through an elected body such as yourself. And quite frankly, this council is not up for revaluation until 12 years has passed under the statute. So thank you for the opportunity to bring that to your attention.
Next speaker is Sharon Mirers, to be followed by Brent Pichard.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for letting us address this non-agenda item of the CSC. My problem with it is not only the increased millage, but the fact that currently, according to Tax Watch, we are the fifth-highest taxed county out of 67 counties. Do we really need more taxation? Also, whether you're aware of it or not, there are already nine counties that have a CSC. Seven of those counties rank lower than Leon County on the 2019 Florida Child Well-being Index. Some of those counties have been around since 1990, 1988. These are the ones that are below what Leon County currently provides for our children. One of the counties, Pinellas, has been in business since 1946 with a child services county. Leon County is doing well. We probably could do better in a lot of areas, but we need to take a further look at whether or not a millage increase is the answer on property owners for this particular committee to be formed, council to be formed. Thank you, and I hope that you will seriously consider removing it from the ballot in November.
Next speaker is Brent Pichard, to be followed by Michelle Andrews.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you very much for the opportunity to voice our concern about the CSC. Little background, in June of 2018, this body voted to place a children's services tax as a referendum on the 2020 ballot. That day, in this very room, there were many voices here in support of the referendum. Everybody in this room today wants the best for the community's children. But we must not let our legitimate concern for a relatively small constituency lead us into what may be an unnecessary burden on a very large constituency, that being the property owners, renters, and taxpayers of Leon County. By putting the issue to a referendum without first defining the nature, the scope, the urgency, the effectiveness, and the finances of such a program is to abdicate the responsibility of leadership to the ballot box. Said another way, if decisions on highly complex issues like the Children's Services Council are going to be thrust on the voters, why not just disband this body and just let citizens vote on every issue that ordinarily would come before you? Over 130 different children's programs in Leon County with an estimated $200 million of resources are already being invested in the children of Leon County, and yet, there is no readily available indicator of how they are doing individually or collectively. Wouldn't prudence and a concern for your taxpaying constituents call for a thorough understanding of what all these programs are doing and how they are doing before imposing yet another tax and another government program? A number of us here today, this afternoon, are just asking you to reverse your vote of June 2018 by taking the CSC referendum off the ballot and do what responsible leaders do, take careful aim at defining the problem before pulling the trigger. And who knows, with all those facts on the open, out in the open, we would probably support it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Michelle Andrews, to be followed by Merton Munson. Sorry, that's probably Michael. Sorry about that.
Hi, folks, how you doing? Thank you for the work that you all do. Appreciate you all letting folks come and, in a ticket as myself, to come before this group. And I'm speaking the same issue that these folks have previously, and I'd like to add a little context to it. I think sometimes, you know, the funding part of the problem is problematic to me. But I'd like to add some context to that. It's not because I don't like children. I have seven of them, raised seven children, so I do like them. Coached many, many years in the recreation soccer program. I've had lots of dealings with the kids, and like them, and they are our future. We want each and every one of our children in Leon County to do well. So I partly support what the Commission, what the report was put together. All the goals that are there, good education, stable community, stable families, we all want that for our kids. So there's no, there's no problem there with what they're doing and how they're going about that. I think that, you know, perhaps, I like numbers, and maybe that's because, you know, maybe that's the reason why I married a math teacher, but, you know, some of the numbers are bandied about, you know, $200 million a year to children's programs. The budgets of the three entities, you know, city, county, school boards, probably about $1.2 billion, and we're talking about $8 million, which is not, does not sound like a lot of money, but it is. I am a, you know, grew up in a Depression-era parent household, and so Dad was real tight about how we spent money, and we tried to, he tried to figure out every way how not to spend it before he let any of it go. So that's the same thing I would urge here, is while I would like it just sort of pushed off the ballot for temporarily, I'd like for the, perhaps, you know, Dad always looked for a creative approach, and maybe within those bodies, the school board, county commission, city commission, there'd be a way to have a little bit more coordination, a little bit more inventory of what programs are really effective and are working well, and help those to work better. Maybe there's some that aren't working well. We want them all to work well, but a little more coordination, a little more inventory, and a little more education as to what this particular council would do, because once it's set in motion, it's there, it'll stay there, it won't go away. So I would just urge that perhaps, maybe the Commission could get together, form another little commission over this problem, and have some folks sit down and figure out some ways to use current and existing funding and coordinate a little more, be creative a little more, and address the problem. Thank you very much for your time, y'all.
Next speaker, Merton Munson, to be followed by Edward Eppinger.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Merton Munson, and I am a resident of Leon County, District 4. And I've come here today to ask you to remove the Children's Services Commission from the ballot. Those who've spoken on this issue before me have done such a good job, I don't really think I need to say anything, except that I support what they said 100%. Thank you.
The next speaker is Edward Eppinger, to be followed by Michael Rosenthal.
Appreciate you allowing me a chance to speak. I'm a volunteer with children, and I work with them in the reading pals at our church. I have an organization that's busy all the time with kids. And I'm not sure that the more we complex the service system we have, the more effective we become. And I think what we've got here is just another growth in the service system instead of decisions to spend money on the right things. And so, thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Rosenthal, to be followed by the last speaker under Citizens to be Heard on Non-Agenda Items, Stanley Sims.
Hello, my name is Michael Rosenthal. Our most, our most valuable resource is our human capital. For example, Hong Kong's only resource is our human capital and freedom. And yet, without any natural resources, they have a higher per capita GDP than the United States, and a higher per capita income that's five times larger than China's. God bless the people of Hong Kong, and may they always be free. So I'm here today to state that we do not need a child services tax. Will another tax improve our human capital? No. Improve the current program so they actually perform? Many childhood programs sound good, but their benefits are lacking when examined. Over 60% of students at TCC need remedial education in one course. Where is the accountability? Who is being held responsible? The longer our children stay in our school system, the further they fall behind our foreign competitors. If you want to target additional funds, two are If you want to target additional funds to our youth, use the excess income you raised by not using the rollback millage rate. This would not require a new tax. Dedicating these excess funds also shows that you care enough and will sacrifice something yourself. So again, I am here to ask you not to consider putting up a child services tax on the ballot. And getting back to the rollback millage rate, a lot of you might not know what a rollback millage rate is. Well, even if government doesn't raise our millage rate, as long as our property values are increasing, our tax bill goes up. In August, we get a notice from the property appraiser, and it's called the trim notice, and in the third column, there's an item called the rollback millage rate, and this is the millage rate that raises the exact same amount of revenue as the prior year. So that basically will freeze your tax bill, and you're not paying more. The question I've asked is homeowners do not benefit from rising home values until they sell their home, so why should government? And it's only fair that you use the rollback millage rate. So I hope all of you here will look into your trim notice and see how much money extra you're paying each year because the government is not acting fairly. The government should not be doing better than its citizens. It's a matter of fairness, it's a matter of social justice and equity, and you need to be more responsible. Thank you.
Final speaker on this Citizens Before Heard on Non-Agenda Items, Stanley Sims.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avenue Way. I'm sticking my leg out here because I want you all to see my shiny shoes. Reason why my shoes are shiny, because we got a shoe-shine man downtown. His name is Tyrone. Miss Dozier, I worked 18 months to get this man downtown. If you're not aware, we have no black businesses downtown. This is our first black business. I'm looking around, and it's a lot of dusty shoes, scuffed up. So I want you all to go see Tyrone. He ran across, they gave him prime property, he ran across from the governor's, I don't know the name, the restaurant and the hotel. I had never lived in, I've been here all my life, I haven't been there, but Tyrone is right outside. And if you don't have time for a shine, drop something in the can and be kind. That's what I like about Tyrone. We are moving, we're doing positive things. This is an adventure, Mr. Maddox, with OEV. I could not have done this without myself. I also want to give a shout out to the Downtown Improvement Authority, Mr. Alan Thompson. He's the unofficial white mayor, and I'm the unofficial black mayor, you know, so we work as a tag team match. This is the beginning of something greater. We've got other minority businesses, as soon as we hear positive word, wake up there, from OEV. When we get our proposal from OEV, we will be doing more things like this in our community. Jimbo, get your shoes shined. We're gonna be doing a promotion. Vince, I can't see your shoes, but I know you keep them shining. Now Tyrone needs that responsibility. We're gonna be working with the media. We want, this is his first week, Ms. Mayor. We're gonna work with the media because we need to support him. My next man is a peanut man and a hot dog man, so if y'all know somebody, tell them to call me. We want to get, now in my last 30 seconds, I want to talk about this children thing. Y'all gonna tax us anyway, so if you're gonna tax us, I ask for equality. Equality. What do you mean by equality? Push that money to the community, not to a consultant. And we got unofficial consultants now. Go ahead, Dave, when I get juicy, that thing get to rolling. All right, I'm gone because my friend's here, and I gotta, hey, right. All right, thank you, Mr. Sims. All right.
It's Mr. Tyrone, Vince. We got it. In general business, I'm gonna make a few changes here. If you look at the latter part of our general business, most of it's bid awards and things, and rather than holding people up that are here, I'm gonna go ahead and jump to 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and knock all that out, because that's a five-minute transaction unless, we have no speakers, so I'd like to walk through those first, and then we'll come back and go to 17. Is there a second? I'll second that, yeah, just for logistics. But yeah, Commissioner Dozier, you have it?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was switching gears here after, I'm not sure if I'm the only one hearing Erica Badoo call Tyrone after that from Mr. Sims, so I had to switch gears here. You were saying you wanted to jump to the bids?
Just, let's go ahead and push the administrative stuff through.
Item number 21 may have speakers, and they assumed that that item would not come up until later in the meeting.
Okay. If you think they might come in later, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so I don't want to, the neighborhood representatives, we told them we had a number of items before that one.
Are there any of the other ones between 20, 22, 23, 24 that is any way, okay, that's all.
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to be 20, 22, 23, and 24, pulling 21 out for consideration later.
And then we'll just take everything else sequentially. So let's start with 20. Okay, thanks. Do we actually need a motion to shuffle it, or can I just do it on the fly?
It's an agenda modification, it needs a motion.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, now let's go to 20, which we do not have any speakers on. It is the helicopter.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of item 20.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion on the helicopter lease?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to congratulate our staff and the folks at the Sheriff's Department. This was a huge lift and absolutely necessary, so just good work.
Forty-year-old helicopter, that's what they've been flying in for the last, yeah, so nice job, yeah, well done, you guys. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. 21 was the one you wanted to pull?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got 22, which is a bid award for the construction of safety improvements on Old Bain Bridge. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. 23, which is the bid award for construction at ARP, Appalachian Regional Park.
Mr. Chairman, I move item number 23. I was excited about the park, that cross-country facility. I watched that cross-country facility grow over the years, it's become a real gem of our community, and it's yielded a lot of money for our community. It's something that we didn't even know we had, and we just threw something out there, and now it's a world-class cross-country track.
And it keeps getting better, I think.
It keeps getting better, so I will make the motion proudly for item number 23, staff recommendation.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Perfect. Do you want to wait on the appointments? That's not something, because that might take some discussion between us. Is there anybody? It was part of a motion, you're right, so let's go through it. Yeah, okay. Board appointments on the, let me bring this up.
Mr. Chairman, if I could help you out, this agenda item again seeks board appointments for the Advisory Committee on Quality Growth, the Board of Adjustment Appeals, and the Joint City-County Bicycling Group. All eligible applicants for each are listed and reflected in options 1 through 3.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna nominate Patrick O'Brien for the Advisory Committee on Quality Growth.
All right, we have a motion for Patrick O'Brien. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, that's one, okay.
Make a motion on 2 and 3, there are only one candidate in each case.
Okay, for the candidate that's been, we have a motion for number 2 and 3, for the candidates that have been proposed.
Right.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect. I think that's it. Okay, now we go back to, thank y'all, appreciate that. We go back to 17. It's all yours, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 17 seeks your direction regarding awarding a bid for the unincorporated area curbside waste collection services or to authorize the county administrator to negotiate a renewal of the current contract with Waste Pro. Commissioners, as you recall, the county previously issued a bid for these services back in the fall of last year. That bid resulted in just one responsive bid. In an effort to attract more competition and to reduce costs, the board rejected the sole bid at that time and authorized a revised bid be reissued. The modifications in the revised bid were based on feedback received from multiple vendors who did not initially bid. Commissioners, the revised scope did result in three bids as compared to the sole bid in the previous effort. Two of the bids were deemed responsive. The lowest bid before you today, commissioners, is FCC. FCC's bid is 18, 19 per month for residential collection, which is a 20% increase or $48.48, annual increase from the current rate being charged by Waste Pro. An alternative, commissioners, that we've presented to you, both viable options to awarding the FCC bid and to minimize any cost increase to subscribers would be for the county to negotiate a renewal of the current contract with Waste Pro. The renewal would not include any enhanced level of service, and regardless of which option the board chooses to direct tonight, the process has sufficient time built in to ensure a smooth transition. With that, commissioners, we have several speaker cards on this item.
Okay. I'd say we listen to speakers before we even open up discussion, if that's all right.
Mr. Chairman, first speaker, Lloyd Choudhury.
Lloyd, and I've been reminded, name and address for the record when you get up here.
My name is Lloyd Choudhury at 8487 Congressional Drive here in Leon County. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I just want to first talk about the waste hauling services to the citizens of Leon County. Waste Pro is a Florida-based company, American-owned. We've been operating in this area for approximately 15-plus years. Waste Pro employs several Leon County drivers, helpers, administrative people servicing this area, and several other contracts. Waste Pro has hauling companies throughout North Florida, so in the event of a major catastrophe, God forbid, hurricane, tornadic activity, we can pull resources from out the area to converge on an area that's been hit hard. We pride ourselves on that mobility. There are major advantages to Leon County exercising a three-year extension. The one, of course, being the main, right now, it's being $14.15 for residential service here in Leon County. If you negotiate with us to move forward with three-year extension, that rate will not increase. That's a substantial saving over the next three years, talking about $4 million-plus dollars over the next three years. You had mentioned that there would not be any service that is over and above what's being provided now. Well, to be honest with you, we have already put two new trucks in service. We have already put a program in place to revamp the existing trucks to meet all the requirements that are needed to service this community. We look forward to doing that. I want to keep this short, but also want to ask you, do you want to save the community the $4 million over the next three years? I ask that you vote tonight to continue services with Waste Pro. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Inigo Sands, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Inigo Sands, you said it correctly, 9172 Lee Road, Houston, Texas.
Thank you.
And I am the chief executive officer of FCC Environmental Services. My responsibility is to oversee all the waste management business of FCC Group in the Americas from our headquarters in Houston, Texas. We are here today to ask you to issue an NOI to FCC, which is the next step in appreciation policy, and formally approve the consent of work to FCC at a later county commission meeting. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit more about FCC. FCC is a global multinational company. We are publicly traded on the European Stock Exchange. FCC is a 120-year-old company with more than a century of experience servicing to cities and counties all over the world. FCC is one of the top five largest environmental companies in the world. We serve in 35 countries and four continents in more than 5,000 municipalities. FCC has a fleet of more than 16,000 trucks and more than 300 waste treatment and recycling facilities worldwide. We are known for our innovation in our business. We were the first company to introduce automatic sale orders in the waste collection business. We also were the first company to introduce CNG-fueled trucks in the industry. We have more than 2,000 vehicles using clean fuels, including hybrid and fully electric powered vehicles. And we also operate some of the most sophisticated waste processing facilities in the world. In the U.S., we are positioned with the top waste and recycling companies. We have more than 54,000 employees and $7 billion annual revenues. More than two-thirds of our investors are North Americans, including the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation, which hold close to a 6% share of our company ownership. We started our environmental activities in the U.S. 12 years ago. Today, we have more than 20 contracts in the U.S. with a backlog of more than $2 billion to serve more than 8 million Americans and close to 1 million Florida citizens. Employing 800 people in the U.S., we have contracts with some of the most important cities in the country, such as Houston, Dallas, Omaha, and we are also here in Florida, servicing Orange County, Paul County, Palm Beach County, and Volusia County. There are many cities all over the world where we have been serving for decades during times of war and peace, crisis and prosperity, with all kinds of political and social environment. This is because we are big, but we conduct business in a local manner. Wherever we work, we embrace the community to invest, create jobs, and partner with as many local businesses that help us provide the excellent services that your citizens deserve. Our company is very excited for the opportunity to serve Leon County and to open a new business in this beautiful place, bringing new technology, outstanding service, and the best customer
The next speaker. The next speaker is Charles Merkley.
Name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, county commissioners. My name is Charles Merkley. My address is 6760 Moscogee Street, Orlando, Florida. I'm the Florida Area FCC Environmental Services Manager. I've been working in this industry all my professional career, over 43 years. I've had a wonderful experience of working in this county previously as a district manager in the middle 2000s. I've enjoyed that contract in the community then, and look forward to another opportunity to serve the residents of Leon County. Here in Florida, we have signed contracts to provide curbside services for four counties to close to 1 million Floridians, with many different equipment, along with customer service, includes commercial and industrial operations, to include black door collections. Each contract we operate with a local focus. Each county has its unique set of circumstances. We work diligently prior to the submission of the bid to ensure that we have built a resource and an operational plan to support our specifics, as we did here in Leon County. We're very proud of our customer service, satisfaction, our startup transitional procedures are industry-leading, and frankly, that's just what we do. For more than 100 years, we've been servicing municipal-type contracts with our experience and know-how to deliver exceptional service on day one. I'm here in front of you today, asking for the opportunity to bring FCC values and dedication to the community in Leon County. We recently successfully transitioned 107,000 residential homes and 1,800 commercial accounts in Palm Beach County, one of the largest counties within the state. We're very proud of that record, and so are the people of Palm Beach County, and that's resulted with zero liquidated damage to our firm to date, without any grace period, so hitting the ground running day one. All of our trucks will be committed to 100% CNG day one. We are proud to lead the industry in We are proud to lead the industry in the clean gas emission usage. The trucks will have the latest technology and safety and cameras to ensure the best performance and customer service. We've also entered into an agreement for a facility located in Leon County, if we're fortunate enough to win this contract. We are confident and led by a general manager of forty-three dedicated Leon employees. Many of them will come from the current vendor. We dedicate our employees with brand-new trucks, highly confident in delivering the service of Leon County residents to expect. Should you have any further questions, our team will gladly be here.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jessica Iserman.
Welcome back. Name and address for the record.
So, this is very strange for me, being on the other side here. First, Jessica Iserman, four oh one East Jackson Street, Suite twenty-one hundred, Tampa, Florida. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Attorney, Mr. County Administrator. To get some housekeeping business out of the way, I would like to request six minutes, if possible. I, we did have another speaker card put in, and she has waived her time to me. If you could...
No offense, Jess, I'd rather skip to three. We start playing games with... If you want to have somebody come up behind you, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to run through this quick, so I apologize for talking very quick. Okay, so how did we get here? I think Vince ran through that quickly. We're right now on a bid that was issued in December twenty-nineteen in FCC.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Who does Jessica represent? FCC, okay. Thank you.
So, to clarify, I am now in private practice, as I'm sure you all remember. I'm representing FCC Environmental Services. I'm here today to talk to you about the bid before you. So, I want to hit in on the complaints. So, Waste Pro was the subject of over two thousand complaints last year and paid out over two hundred thousand dollars in liquidated damages. And if you recall, you created a contract compliance position whose full-time function was to respond and resolve complaints by Waste Pro customers. In my opinion, Waste Pro's performance does not reflect Leon County's expectation for customer service, and that's not only my opinion, that was in the agenda item. The low-quality service led the county to raise standards, which is why the bid was sent out in September and again in December. So, we can actually do a direct comparison of FCC's customer service with Waste Pro's customer service. In Orange County, there are five zones, and each zone has a company awarded a bid. One zone went to FCC, another zone went to Waste Pro. We can compare those. This is a chart that shows the last two years of complaints. The green is Waste Pro. The blue is FCC. And if you extrapolate this data, that would lead to seven times the complaints than, in Leon County, that Waste Pro has over FCC, if you look at a per-resident complaint rate. So, overall, the decision to be made today is, do you want the status quo? Authorize the county administrator to renew the current contract at the same prices but with the same customer service, or continue with your December ITV process? And with that, you have the better customer service with a company that is tried, tested, and has been proven to have better customer service, and they know what they're doing. They're logistical experts. So, these, this is just a summary of the rates and where FCC's proposal fell in comparison with the other proposals and the current rate and seven years ago. Now, again, this is the decision to be made, and I urge you to continue your process, your ITV process. I would like to have a side note of, I would recommend if you choose FCC, I request that you issue an NOI as opposed to issue the award, which kind of sounds counterintuitive considering I'm representing FCC and I want them to get the award. However, it's important to note that we just want to make sure the purchasing policy is followed to the letter because we don't want litigation down the road. So, I'm an overly cautious person. I would request an NOI be issued, and with an NOI being issued, the county is not setting the award. They can still cancel the bid. They can still choose to award the bid to Waste Pro after today's decision to enter the NOI, but that's the first step. Let's, let's go ahead and get the NOI done and then move on to the award of the bid at your next meeting in February, assuming there's no bid protest. But if there is, we will go through the process appropriately and come back before you. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything, as well as the team. Thank you.
Final speaker on this item, Gigi Rolini.
Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and throw my opinion out there and let the, let the board chew on it a bit. Ms. Iserman made some valid points there about the complaints that we did receive from Waste Pro. I'd like to get a report from staff, somebody come up and tell us how we're doing now versus how we started, if those complaints have continued to come, if they have or they are at a number that is not representative of who we are as an organization. Second question, the second thing I want to say is frankly, that fourteen, that fourteen dollars and fifteen cents is convincing for my resident, for the people who we serve residentially. I understand exactly where FCC stands on this, but I don't, I don't think I could trade right now for four dollars or so, almost five dollars, if the level of service has not received the level of complaints that it did in the beginning. And so, pending what I hear from staff right now, I'm leaning towards going ahead and giving staff the ability to extend the contract under the current fourteen dollars fifteen cent rate with the, with Waste Pro, so...
Commissioners, if it's, if it's your desire, Maggie Terrio is available to answer any questions you might have.
Absolutely. I mean, if you have a question, I'd, I'd like the question answered, too.
Yeah. Maggie, if you could just, just come up, just give us, give us an indication on where the complaints are. Have they decreased the level of service? Are people pleased? Or what are the plans moving forward to make sure if we do move in this direction that what we had in the previous three years will not occur in the next?
Sure thing. So, as a past budget analyst for the county, I could get really detailed with the numbers, but I'll stay high-level. On an annual level, if you look at the last few years, the overall dollars in complaints have continued to go up. Just in summary, looking at two thousand seventeen, grand total in dollars is thirty-seven thousand, then we jump up to a hundred and four thousand. This year, two thousand nineteen, jumped up to two hundred and one thousand. However, two-year earlier, more detailed question of more recent past, yes, since September of two thousand nineteen, about the time that we went out to bid on the, or your first agenda item was before you on this topic, there has been a significant correction in liquidated damages, and they've been very moderate, floating around two thousand dollars a month in the last quarter.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator, thank you for, for answering. Mr. Administrator and Mr. Chair, last question I have. If, if we decide to move in this direction of to extend, let's say, let's say, six months from now, three months from now, we start getting a level of complaints that we got in the past, is there any recourse there to go back and then say, okay, this isn't working out for us? We want to, we want to go ahead and move forward in another direction because we're not getting the level of service that we believe we deserve or we were, we were expected to get? Is there any room for that?
Yeah. We would anticipate an initial three-year term of the contract. The contract will have penalties included in it, and any time that either staff or the county commission deem that we need to reconsider the contract, we'd bring it back for your consideration.
Is there any penalty for the, for the, for reconsideration for us? Is there any penalty for reconsideration if we wanted to be brought back for reconsideration?
I'd, I'd have to defer to the county attorney's office on that.
Mr. Attorney?
There won't be.
Thank you.
All right. Good question, yeah. Commissioner Dozier.
I'm sorry. That last question, Ms. County Attorney, you said there won't be any financial penalties?
No.
Okay. But the staff...
If we negotiate the three-year extension, yeah, that's, it, it says the same terms and conditions. We're not going to modify the conditions. In other words, the, the level of service was part of the bid. The level of service will remain the same. I believe in light of our faith, good faith, if you would, if that's what the board decides to do, to authorize the county administrator to negotiate, I think we need to have a termination provision in there that we, that is more than the financial. I, I think that would be a, a thing that we should put in there, and, and I understand that the contract says same terms and conditions. I, I recognize that that's unilateral. In other words, we want the same terms and conditions, but if we want something else in order to negotiate the agreement, I don't, I, I don't see why we can't do that. I mean, you can negotiate anything if both parties want to do it. So, I, it's something that's been lacking in, in our contract, which is, all right, a four-caused termination provision. You have more than X number of complaints in any quarter, then we're not going to wait the full three years, and, and I think that's a valid consideration.
So, on this point, just picking up on Commissioner Maddox's line of questions here, which were good, and I appreciate the, the information that you provided, Maggie. We were kind of stuck for the last few years with the service levels we had. That's why we exercised liquidated damages, ended up hiring a staff person to manage this issue with those damages that we were receiving from Waste Pro because that clause was not in the contract. So, that, your suggestion to add that clause to the contract going forward is so that we don't get into the position that we have been in the last several years.
Keeping in mind that if you're going to do that, I mean, if you're going to exercise some sort of a termination provision, you're going to need a significant amount of notice in advance to get somebody to gear up to take over. I mean, it's, it's not your regular sort of a contract, and you can get asphalt contracts, and I'm not picking on them, but there's a number of other providers that could pick up immediately. But if you're going to hire a completely different firm, they're going to have to have a significant lead time to buy the trucks and hire the people and all of that sort of stuff. So, it won't be like a thirty-day thing. It's going to be a longer period of time.
And that may be exceptionally challenging for us to make a change, leaving us in virtually the same position that we've been in the past because of the time and other things.
Right, which is why you would keep the liquidated damages part in there.
And to the cost to the county, should we choose to do that, I think your answer pointed to no penalties in the contract for breaking the contract early, should we have that clause, but that does not take into account the staff time to redouble the efforts, to put out another bid, to deal with this from your office, from our Department of Resource Stewardship Budget Office across the board. We would have a substantial contribution of staff time, which is taxpayer dollars as well. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I, I wanted to follow up on that, the line of questions from, that Commissioner Maddox brought up, because just thinking about the fourteen fifty is, it is compelling. I mean, this is a rate increase, and we should all be careful, and I know we all are very careful about any kind of increase for anything, for fees, for rates, whatever it might be. I'm going to say, I think there are really good people involved in Waste Pro. I appreciate the efforts, but it is startling to me to hear that the improvement in the services started when we decided to put this out to bid. That does not give me any confidence that this level of service increase and the complaints that have gone down, and yet we've still seen two thousand dollars a month based on what Maggie just told us. So, I have, I have very little confidence going forward for what I have heard from constituents in District Five for the last few years. The fact that it, this started to improve just in September when we made a decision not to renew the contract and to go to bid, that is not a good signal. In other cities, I want to say, you know, there was a reason why Jessica Iserman was in high demand, and that was a good slide you put up there. I mean, being able to show complaints side by side. I believe that Waste Pro could get better. I absolutely do. I'm not sure I'm willing to take that risk, and I think that we would be paying for it either in the service bill, to your point, Commissioner Maddox, that, you know, it, it is an impact to the residents, or they would be paying for it in tax dollars to manage this issue going forward. It's a big thing to change your waste company, but I think we are at that point, and the fact that FCC has worked successfully in counties around Florida gives me some confidence. So, I would lean in that direction. I'm not going to make a motion right now, Mr. Chair, because I'd rather hear thoughts from others and the questions, but that's, those are my concerns, and I, I, last thing, I'm glad we did this again. I, I like the comparison, which is an opportunity we didn't have in December, so, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor, then Minor, then Looney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do like Attorney Jessica Iserman. She was an outstanding Leon County attorney. A couple of times I complimented her work here, and...
Couple of times.
Yeah, at least a couple of times. That's good from me, you know? I mean, she got two compliments from me. She did good, 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 good work. And not that there are people that we don't want to hear from for six minutes, but she's a person that if we had the chairman granted her six, I would like to have heard her for six minutes. She's that kind of person. I've also been impressed with Max Hurl, who have, who've bent my knee, and he's very, very, someone I very much respect, outstanding. So, they, they have good pedigree representing and floating the name of this company. But I want to know, I think that a big contract like this begins with the question of inclusivity, and though it's not here, I'd like to know how close are the numbers in the bids which were submitted? And we have just a long, big old pile of paper, and I could not, I did not see a layout of the, the prices and what came through, and I don't know if it was intentional that we would not have it in our notes, but I'm curious to know what is the difference in the lowest, in the next group up? That's one question. Secondly, Waste Pro, it's, does its hiring reflect the diversity of our community in its management, middle areas, as well as the total workforce? And I think that when we're giving contracts of like this, which have impacted the entire county, which all residents do pay for the services of a collection of, like that, that we have to have a company that is sensitive to making sure that there's a redistribution of the monies we paying them, that it goes back into the community with equity. And I think that that can best be reflected in its hiring, and that's not a part of the, the ask, but that's our fault. And I'd like to know from FCC, when they go in, do they bring crews with them? They hire people from the community and train them, work with them? And we've been talking about our apprentice program yesterday and training tomorrow's workers and all of that. Is there an apprentice program? Is there a, do they do some do-goody stuff like support Hartsfield Children's Choir? What have Waste Pro did with our money that have gone back to help the youth soccer league in Fort Branton? There is no report on their social responsibility. So, it, it galls me a little bit that the social indicators, which we really ought to think about, value, and in particular, as it's reinvested into our community, ain't no social indexes to reflect none of these companies. So, I think if it's just a ball face, who got the lowest number, and if our county attorney is suggesting that we can put these complaints and put threshold points as to when you get so many points, then we can rescind the contract, which I think that's what he was saying. That's just, that's just one standard. But... But Attorney Eiserman showed what was going on in Orlando, which is really not fair, because Orlando and Tallahassee are different. And I have not seen the numbers of complaints in Tallahassee, and for my money, that's what count, Leon County. I don't think that you can equate a telephone call about the trash company didn't pick up my trash with a domestic violence call. And I am not sure the nature, the level of neglect which those calls reflected for complaints. But none of them are at the high level of domestic call. We're talking about somebody didn't pick up the trash. So it's not a, you know, of course, people are paying for the service, but it's not at that magnitude of human indignity inflicted. So those are the questions that I have. Social responsibility, hiring, minority participation, engagement, subcontracting, and what was the price points, and what are we losing? That's my question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Proctor, I can answer your question on price or cost. Many of the other questions, you know, we may have to defer to some of the organization's representatives that are in attendance tonight. Relative to the cost, and what you were asking, Commissioner Proctor, just to clarify, is what FCC's, the low bid, bid was in relation to the second low bid and not to the current rate, right? So you wanted to know what the second low bid was as compared to the first low bid. So FCC's, the low bid was 1819 per month, and the Waste Pro bid was 1897 per month, the second low bid.
So if I'm hearing you right, FCC gave us the lowest bid, but we had a, they held a bailout clause in a Wild Joker, which they were able to play and say, if you keep us, we just forget the 1897, we'll stay at the $14.
That's correct.
Okay, good. That's a pretty good leveraging. And if the number of phone calls is what would keep us from going with, and they would back down off of $4, that makes sense. It's just a business decision. It makes sense. But if the commission, if the chairman would afford me, I want to, if that's the only issue we can look at, we'll stay there. You can't beat that, and I'm not going to be able to vote against them willing to stay the same. I can't justify that to my constituents. But I would like to ask, Mr. Chairman, if you would, because I think it's important as a matter of public policy, if I could ask Waste Pro about their level of social responsibility to our community and if they are engaged because of their very poor corporate client and just we get no bang from them. I'd rather somebody doing right by our community, somebody doing totally wrong and cheap.
I think if we're going to ask one to come, we'd have to ask both, and I think it gets down to slippery slope. I can appreciate your line of questioning, but I think it's really, in light of what we've got, that's really not germane to the bid, which is a facts and figures type of thing. I mean, I think there's a place for that, but I think I'd have to ask both of them to come, and I don't want to.
Can I ask those questions?
Pardon?
Can I ask those questions? I'd like to know their level of social responsibility currently from Waste Pro or FCC.
I think if you read their bid response, both of them, you know, articulated, here's what we do in the communities, here's what our involvement is, here's how we hire, to a large degree. That's, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of that's in the bid response.
I didn't see anything like how many blacks they hire in top management. I didn't see anything like that.
I don't know.
I think that's a serious question. I'm just one commissioner. I think it's, my vote is worth understanding their commitment to diversity and a distribution of the public's dollars in their pocket. I want it to come back into the community's pocket and to be equitable.
I mean, it's a slippery slope here. I'm a little nervous about having.
Sure, some of the questions, and I think it's helpful not to say that they're not completely in order, and as I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, if you wish, you've got the organizations here to respond. However, this is a hard bid situation. This is not an RFP. In RFP environment, we get into sort of a lot of those different types of things outside. This is almost a commodities type of, we know the level of service, we bid it, and we get a hard bid, and that's what we did here.
I get it, Mr. Chairman. What I'll do is, because the issue is that now, I will forego the need to examine a social index, but I would float that as a shot across the.
Fair, and that's good.
Yeah, for Waste Pro to understand that the future, and say to our county, these are the questions that we should be asking as a part of how we consider a responsive bid and a responsible company.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to go to Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Lindley, and then before we make the second lap around, I'm going to weigh in, and Commissioner Jackson, if you've got something. So Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the three bidders to the invitation to bid, Waste Pro, FCC, and Waste Management. It's a tremendous amount of work to respond to an invitation to bid or RFP. I mean, it's just, for something of this magnitude, it takes a lot of work. So thank you for your interest. For me, this boils down to one simple question, which our decision should be based upon. Are our citizens willing to spend $4 a month more for what appears to be an increased level of customer service? And, you know, the materials that FCC produced, I think, are very impressive. I think the level of service that they have provided elsewhere is commendable. I've mentioned this to Mr. Childery. I mean, we do receive quite a bit of complaints from our clients in the incorporated areas regarding Waste Pro. As Commissioner Dozier said, it's been quite a bit less the last several months. I don't think I've gotten one in the last two or three months. But it's been quite a bit less. So for me, it boils down to that one question. Are our citizens willing to pay, in uncorporate areas, $4 a month more? I know some of my residents in District Three would, based on some of the complaints that I've received, but I'm guessing that most of them would not. So I'm not, I want to hear from everybody else before I want to make a motion. But for me, what I would like to see is a renegotiation of the current contract with Waste Pro, but as our county attorney has mentioned, with some provisions in there that would allow us to accommodate Commissioner Maddox's point, which is that we have the ability as a board to come back and reassess, should the level of customer service with our existing vendor not meet the standards that we want. And one way, I'm not going to get in the weeds, but one way to do that might be a certain maintained level of customer service, and should that threshold be not met for three consecutive months, that comes back to the board for us to review and possibly discuss a phased termination of the contract. Something like that might be something to kind of have both ways. I mean, having the existing price of 1415 a month, which I think most of our residents would want to keep, but yet still being able to maintain the type of customer service that we've seen from Waste Pro over the last three or four months. That's kind of my thinking right now, but I'd like to hear from everybody else before, before at least I make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you very much. Well, I think we need to be clear at the onset that a lot of the complaints that we've heard over the last several years about Waste Pro, we brought on ourselves because we heard the siren song of lower rates, was it six or seven years ago, when we got quite a reduction in residential rates and about a third less, I believe, at the time. I think Waste Pro probably underbid at the time and couldn't do what it thought it could do, given the lower rates for our residents. So I do keep that in mind when we, and there was, it was a very, very bad period of a couple of years when we were getting so many complaints daily, if not hourly, for quite some time. I don't think we can forget that, even with a lot of goodwill. I am kind of interested myself, and I'd like to know just a little bit more about what the notice of intent would give us in terms of time to maybe answer some of these questions that have come up today. And I am impressed with the environmental services FCC's organization, the lower number of complaints. I mean, I think that's something that if our residents want to feel like their local government is providing them a high level of service, which in Leon County, we try to go above and beyond, just getting the job done. So I would make a motion to go forward with the NOI for ACC. And give us a little bit more time to get some questions answered, and, you know, we'll time to explain to residents a little bit more of what's going on as well.
I'll second that for discussion, but I'd like to.
I want to make sure.
Get the county attorney's response to the NOI.
So your motion is for, I want to make sure I understand what your motion, yeah?
It would be for the NOI, it would be for FCC, but with a slight delay to get some more questions answered. Is that how I, explain to me a little bit for sure, if I know what I'm going for for the NOI. I see it as a delay for us to get some time to finalize some of the questions that we've been asking.
It would cause the FCC to basically be your selection, if you would, pending your final vote, which would occur on, was it the 12th of February? It would, I believe, lift the cone of silence also, and so you would be subject to discussions.
All right.
Thank you. That's what, I just don't see the point in going through, I mean, I understand transitions are terrible or can potentially be. I don't see the point in going ahead and staying the course where we are, where we've had a lot of complaints, yes, fewer now, and then we wait for three more months to see, well, are the complaints going to go up again? And then what do we do in three more months? I just would like to make a clean break at this point and go with FCC.
Before we make a second lap around, I want to weigh in, because, Commissioner Jackson, you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this is fresh off of our retreat and strategic initiative from yesterday, and boils down, like I believe Commissioner Minor said, to an increase in costs. An increase in costs creates an increase in letter, in my opinion, with the constituents. District Two, that's an awfully powerful, I guess, determining factor, as far as my vote is concerned. I did not anticipate that the rate would come back at that, you know, that much of a savings. I think it's important that we allow the administrator, as well as the company, to sit and determine exactly the level of service. And if that comes back, we need to have some sort of, I think Commissioner Maddox mentioned it, some sort of, if there are damages or there continue to be complaints, that we have some sort of loophole or some sort of ability to negotiate that. I think that's what you said, Herb. Am I correct? Okay. I think that's very important regardless of which direction we go in, but the increase or the greater increase, this comes down to dollar and cents, as far as I'm concerned.
And I appreciate the good line of questioning. Nick, I think your comments regarding customer service are critical, you know, clearly, and you've got two sides to this. One is customer service, the other is price. And let's face it, garbage is a messy business. No matter how you strike it, there's no way we get through this without some level of complaints. So, and I'm not sure how fair it is to compare a county to another based on, because there's different populations and different needs, and that's kind of a hard one to do. If I understand correctly, from what I read and from my briefing, is we can basically hold status quo as we are today, ask the administrator, go back to our current provider and say, can we make this better? And then come back and say, it's better, now what do we do? And legally, I think, if I understand correctly, that'll hold. So in other words, we can go back to Waste Pro and say, we would like to make this better. And frankly, we'd like the question relative to customer service, which is kind of a new wrinkle, which is if the customer service got to a point, and what your pricing looked like, and then come back. And we can always say at that point, it didn't get as good as we think it could, and guess what? We're going to go back out now to the second bidder in this case, or as I look at it. But I don't see the harm in doing that. In fact, frankly, I think it's a little irresponsible to not do that to see, because we don't know. I don't know where that's going to end up. But I think there's an argument to be made to say, let's go back, renegotiate with our current. I don't know how many of us were there during the transition, but wow. I'm not anxious to send out 40,000 first-class letters and say, we've got an increase. And the transition was brutal, and I don't think that's Waste Pro's problem. It was just a combination of a lot of bad things that happened. But I'm not really interested in making that jump without a really compelling reason. So I would argue, and I can't make a substitute motion, but I would be very interested, and I may pass the gavel if nobody will take me up on this, in a motion that says, let's renegotiate with the, which is basically option number one, which is renegotiate with the current provider and then bring it back for board consideration. We can always step back and say, guess what? We're going to take the other bid, and that's the way it goes, if I understand correctly. So, yeah. So, yeah, and I've made it around. I'd like.
I thought, okay, very good. Did you want to jump in on that? Okay. Mr. Chair? The mic was already on when we were doing that. I can't see, I can't see your light on your little thing there. I didn't know if you were in queue. Okay. Got it. Forgive us for the DAS technology up here. You know, Mr. Chair, you so often say, and I think we all agree, that by and large, we agree on this DAS. We don't get into issues where we have really big disagreements. I want to say that upfront because frankly, I'm blown. It is absolutely about the money, but all of the taxpayer money. Everything we do is funded by taxpayer money, unless we get a private grant or something like that. Almost everything we do is taxpayer money, right? Every staff dollar, every invitation to bid, every hour we spend going to look for hydraulic fluid on a road, going to pick up trash on a road, going to see whether or not cans have been pulled back. I remember the emails, and quite frankly, this is a lot with my, Gary is working these emails all the time. So yes, there's been fewer emails in the last six months. That's true. If a kid starts, you know, doing his chores, as soon as you say, if you don't do this or else you're grounded, I'm not sure that holds after he goes out and gets the reward, right? That is my concern here, is that environmentally, customer service-wise, staff time has all been a problem. And if they could cure it, it would have been cured in the last few months, and we would not see $2,000 a month. That's my sense of this. Second piece is, at least for my part, and this is really why I prefaced it, because I don't, we're all taking this seriously, and I know we are. I went into this in the fall expecting a rate increase. I think we heard that from the county administrator. We had an opportunity in September, stick with what you got. Maybe it gets a little better. And Lloyd, to your credit, you were saying that in September. We can get a little bit better, stay with us. We chose collectively to put this out to bid, and then we looked at it in December. We got one bid back. We, again, could have stuck with 1450 or whatever it is, but we chose no. We want to go back out and see other bids to compare. Twice now, we have had the opportunity to stick with that current cost, and we did not. Really, it's the December decision that we made that, to me, is so surprising today for this discussion. Because we had the opportunity, I mean, we knew if we got any other bids, they're probably going to, I assume we knew, they were going to be close to what we saw in December. I mean, someone, that was part of the problem here, is we put it out to bid again, so any other applicants knew what Waste Pro had put in their number, and they could come right under it. I mean, that's the problem with bids. On the other hand, I feel so strongly that the level of service and the environmental impact for trucks that may not be as good as they should be, even if there is a brand-new program to make them better, this has not been improved over recent years. It is an environmental impact, it is a customer service impact, and we. It is an environmental impact, it is a customer service impact, and we absolutely have taxpayers, they may not see it in the bill. And that's where we got to make a decision. Are we willing to send those letters and own the fact for our constituents that they will be paying the cost someplace else, that'll be buried in their tax bill and the staff time and everything like that, or on the Waste Pro bill every month? I am willing to go with that argument to say, this is big enough that I'm not willing to get into a contract that even if it goes south in three or six months, we're going to spend a ton more money to redo this again. I think this is the responsible choice. I think, and I'll, but Commissioner Jackson, I overheard you saying that it's about $48 a month, or $48 a year. So $48 increase, that's what we're talking about. To accommodate the level of service, the complaints, and all of those various factors that we put into this RFP, with new trucks, other things like that, that will not be reflected if we stick with the current price of 1450 with Waste Pro. None of those new things are we going to get that we had in this RFP. I think it is worth $48 a month. I think that is less than the amount of tax dollars we will spend with our staff. And I think we also have to reflect on the integrity of this process, that we have had other opportunities to stick with Waste Pro. We gave them up, and this is a bid, and it's a hard number, and we wanted that increased level of service. So just had to lean in on that point, Mr. Chair. The, yeah, I think I've covered it. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chair, thank you. How difficult it is for Waste Pro to sit in a crowd and hear the reputation of service be destroyed by the complaints that has been given over the past years. I would, I would imagine, as a CEO of business myself, that if I wasn't sitting in a crowd and I was listening to the same thing, that I would make sure, absolutely sure, that it didn't happen again. Because this is recorded, people will be able to go back and watch this, they'll be able to analyze what we've said, they'll be able to look at the complaints that they've had, and they'll be able to judge Waste Pro based off of it. So with that being said, I, I mean, I almost want to bet on Waste Pro, to bet that the company itself has enough pride in what they do to not have us have to come back and have a conversation like this on TV ever again. And I think that's worth $4 to bet on. I don't think there's too many people that I represent at large that's going to be okay with a raise in $4 on the rate that they pay for waste collection, based off of the assumption that the company who now picks up their trash will perform at a level that is unrepresentative of what they're used to from Leon County. The assumption of such. We talk about, we talk about it almost like it's fact, like they don't even have a chance to provide better service to our constituents. I mean, what kind of business are we saying Waste Pro actually is? I mean, there's also a thing there to say, yes, you know, things are getting better, but it only got better when we put it out to bid. So, you know, if we put it out to bid, when we, when they get the bid, when they go back and start going back to the level of service they were at before, how embarrassing it would be for us to have to come back and validate the thought that they cleaned up their act specifically for the bid, and then the level of service decreased after the bid enough to, for us to have to come back and rebid. How embarrassing would that be? Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go with option number one. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Administrator, I want a deal that we can absolutely not refuse, one that gives us a way out. And if, and if it is, if it is at all possible, I would also like for that deal to cover any staff cost that may occur by going, having to go through the process of a bid if we have to rebid it. I want that kind of deal for us.
So we got a motion. I can second-
It's a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
I made the motion for-
Substitute motion.
I made the original motion.
Okay, so substitute motion. And I'm allowed to second that, so I'll second it just so we keep it alive.
And I say, I say to Waste Pro as a company, I looked on your website, and it spoke to, and I don't want to get it wrong, but the Waste Pro way, last sentence says, people make a, make the difference, and caring never goes to waste. I'll ask that you care about our constituents, you care about the level of service that they, that they have come to expect from Leon County. And if you don't care, obviously, we'll be right back here. And if we're right back here, obviously, your reputation will absolutely be ruined as a company in North Florida, and probably for the rest of the state of Florida. Because again, you think FCC is here today talking, to talk about the bad job that you did in Orlando. Wait till we have to come back for the, for a level of service that's not, that's not representative, and how that would be used against you in other bids. Well, I'm willing to bet on you, but I better be right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Chairman, you would get me one out. Just got one of these big chunks of-
How about, how about Commissioner Jackson jumps in, and then Commissioner Proctor-
I'll come back. I have candy.
Just one logistical question that would come back to us, Mr. Administrator. February meeting?
It's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't know what survey instrument, except for zings, that we have gone by to measure Waste Pro's effectiveness or da-da-da. I don't have an official survey from the citizens from our county to know. So for the attorney, Jessica to come up here and throw up Orlando, all I know, if Waste Pro has 80% of Orange County and FCC has 20% of Orange County, well, Waste Pro's supposed to get more complaint, but they caring, they haul in more stuff, they got more contacts. But that instrument did not break down whether or not Waste Pro got 50% of Orlando and FCC got 50% of Orlando. And then you can look at apples to apples if they have the same, I don't know what that was. I imagine they have a smaller piece of the pie and would have a much smaller complaint ratio. But one of the things consistent with what the chairman has lifted up, that strikes me, Vince, is this like a, if we went to $18, wouldn't that be like a, like a 30-some percent increase? Huh?
28.
That's a 28%. Okay.
48 a year.
Huh?
48 a year.
Yeah. So if we asking people, I'm just thinking about the environment, which is our county, we got teachers begging for a raise, ain't got one forever. Law enforcement here in our community, meager increase. The college professors at FAMU got a 1% about two years ago, last year, I mean, a one-time hit and can't nobody remember. Our government workers in our community ain't got no 28%. They ain't seen a raise in a long time. Our county workers, Pittly for raise increase, is Pittly, they ain't got 28%. The county commission ain't got 28%. So if you're talking about increasing $4 and something on a $14 situation, yeah, what I'm trying to say is that the increase is nowhere reflects increases in income for the vast numbers of citizens here in our community. So if our staff can wrestle a standstill rate for people who are strapped and who are largely strangled and being strangulated economically by the majority employers of this region, I think we have to recognize the struggle. I can speak for South Side, that's what I speak for, I can't talk for all y'all. But recognize the struggle of people in my district who have not been honored with a 28% increase. I think that the social responsibility issue have not been settled by either one of these companies. And, you know, we're talking about which one of them is the greenest, which one of them got trucks that don't leak oil, which one of these trucks got, companies have quiet trucks, I don't know. But one of them from Houston, and I don't even know where Waste Pro is from, neither one of them, I don't know what their hiring diversity issues are, and we don't even know what best practices that they utilize to dispose of our trash. I don't know if they burying it down there in Lake McAskey, if they taking it out on a barge and off the guff of, off of Walcolor. I mean, we have no idea what happens, and there's, I don't have an idea what they do. And there's nothing in this literature that tells us specifically their disposal practices. And that should be a considerable element for all of us right now. So given the social responsibility index, which I think is very important to the entire community, disposal processes, their hiring, whether they're local, all of that stuff. But the key thing why I'm, I'm going to support the motion is because what I said, nobody around here has seen a 28%. That's a big markup, and I'm appreciative that we had that reserve clause that gives the county, and my responsibility of stewardship is to the county of Leon, and to be a steward of the people's money, and to recognize the struggles of citizens of this community. And I basically don't think that people want to pay 28% more to take their garbage out when they don't have 28% more even to go to the grocery store in the first place.
Perfect.
So I'm going to support this motion that's on the floor, and I appreciate your allowing-
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We've got three more speakers here, and I would ask that we kind of keep it brief. We've got two more really big issues behind this. A lot of people lined up to speak, and unless most of y'all brought sleeping bags, we probably, I think, let's, so we've got Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Lindley, and Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick. Commissioner Maddox, with your motion on the table, I don't need to have an amended motion for this, but does that imply that the county attorney will work with Waste Pro to negotiate the contract that would allow us to have a review back to the board if the service levels are not to our liking?
Yes.
Okay. In my opinion, this is a no-brainer. I think the people of District 3 would not want, would want us to keep the rate the same, provided that the service level over the last several months, last three months or so, would be maintained, and so long as in our contract, we have the ability as a board to come back and review that, should that service level not be maintained for a certain amount of time. So I'm supporting the motion on the table.
Perfect. Thanks, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. I can see you're a rookie when you say there, this is a no-brainer, because I wish we had more no-brainers that come forward. Not to make a gender issue of this, but I think, I see the writing on the wall up here. I think women are the ones who do most of the shopping in this community or anywhere. And I tell you, if I had a bad customer experience, time and again, time and again, time and again, in this case, we had to hire a whole new employee to handle the customer experience issues. And, you know, I would, I agree, Waste Pro must be really weary of having their name sullied by this constant string of complaints. I would like to hope that they get a lot better. I don't, you know, I'm not going to make it easy for them to feel like they don't have to if this, if this vote goes as I anticipate. To me, an organization that has a good reputation for environmental stewardship and customer service is probably worth the $4 a month. I feel like, I mean, I represent the entire county, not one in particular district. I would say that $48 a year increase for better customer service, a cleaner environment, fewer costs on the part of the county in-house is worth it. Likewise, my goodness, if, if you ask any of our residents here how much they pay a month for their phones, for their Wi-Fi, I would think if they went up $4 a month, they would say, la-dee-dah, who cares? I have to have my phone, I have to have my Wi-Fi. They need their trash service, too. They need their, their recycling and garbage disposal, too. So I'm, you know, you can say 28% increase, or you can say $48 a year. And to me, the increase in service potential, and it sounds like not a big risk, I, that's why I will choose to go with FCC as my, would be my vote today, and it's a new day.
Thanks, Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Dozier, and then let's wind it up and take a list of that vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say ditto to everything Commissioner Lindley just said. I agree with that completely. I assume, Mr. County Attorney, that on a renegotiation, we don't have the option for the IOT, Notice of Intent. That is only relevant to accepting a bid. Is that correct? Okay. I was just wondering if there was a way to kind of pause this and hear some more information from both organizations. The environmental piece is critical. We are about to consider an item on very challenging issues regarding our recycling rate. It does stand out to me that FCC manages recycling in a different way. If we're going to go off of the script of the bid, which I think, I was trying to stick to it, but I just wanted to bring that point into the mix, that we don't know what we don't know right now. So a couple of weeks to get more information from both may be beneficial to us, but I don't see a path to do that. The last thing I want to say, and I don't mean to belabor this, Mr. Chair, but I think we do need to state this in the record, to Commissioner Maddox, good points. If this was the first time that we have aired issues about Waste Pro, he may be right. We have been airing issues about Waste Pro here, in the newspaper, other places, and I'm only talking about the service side of it, for years. That's how we got to this place. We have talked about hiring that staff person in our budget discussion several years ago, and dug into these issues like, I mean, you all remember, well, you don't, Rick, but, Commissioner Minor, forgive me, but we aired all of this, and it had no impact on the service until we put it out to bid. So I am concerned, I cannot support the motion, and I, I think we will waste more tax dollars going forward than $48 per service account. So thank you for the long discussion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a substitute motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, my vote is not against women, contrary to how Commissioner Lindley said that. I'm not voting against-
I would, I would weigh in as collectively with you on that, Commissioner Proctor, as a single guy who does all of that stuff himself. So we have a substitute motion from Commissioner Maddox on the floor with the language relative to the renegotiation, which I think is key. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
5-2 motion carries, if I count right. Okay. Perfect. Thanks. We've got a couple of big more issues. I'm going to see how far we can get. All right. What's up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number 18, Commissioners, this item presents a range of strategies for board consideration to maintain the county's recycling program, both in the immediate future as well as in the long term. The agenda item discusses in detail, Commissioners, as you know, the market for recyclable, recycled materials worldwide continues to decline significantly. As a result, Marpan, the county's recycling provider, recently sent a letter to the county and the city, indicated that they will have to close their single-stream recycling operations. I should note that these challenges are not, are not unique to Leon County. As the agenda item notes, there are at least 60 communities that have suspended their recycling programs entirely. Marpan has indicated that they would continue operating under an interim agreement for 12 months to provide the time for the county and the city to explore the future of our recycling program. Marpan has requested an increased payment in the interim, which is still less than most counties are paying for their recycling, as we note in the analysis of the item. Commissioners, for the long-term strategy, the item recommends partnering with the city to engage a consultant to evaluate a range of policy items to maintain the county's viable recycling program into the future. A final report will come back to the board during your upcoming budget cycle with several options for board consideration. And finally, Commissioners, because the cost of recycling is anticipated to continue increasing into the future, the item recommends the board direct staff to evaluate the solid waste non-advalorem assessment as part of the FY '22 budget process. We are recommending options 1 through 3, Commissioners, and I have no speakers on this item.
Chairman, move item. Recommendation.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate, this is not an easy issue, appreciate the staff work on this, and appreciate Marpan's working with us to extend this, you know, for a time so we could look into other issues. Um- other issues. Ms. County Administrator, in engaging the, a consultant, will that agreement or RFP, however you structure it, will it be brought back to the board for further discussion?
It will, it will specifically be brought back for your approval.
Okay. In that document, or if it's germane, if it's possible, or in some other way, I would really love for us to look at two issues, one being how communities are working with recyclables, maybe not the full stream, but portions to create commercial opportunities in their region. There have been many examples of this, from waste energy to road base. There was a story recently about taking hops from breweries and turning it into flour for low-income folks. There's a lot of commercial opportunities, and I think we should explore those. Secondly, I discussed with the county administrator in my briefing, this is a challenge that will affect all of our surrounding counties, all of our neighboring counties. And I would like to bring it up at the Appalachian Regional Planning Council Board Meeting a week from Thursday, and see what the reaction is from my colleagues on that board, because there may be some opportunities to capture recyclables from our surrounding counties to increase our amounts and perhaps be more commercially viable. So, Mr. Chair, if those are just things I wanted to mention today, so we could reflect on them in that item, that when it comes back, is that good, Mr. County Administrator?
Yeah.
Got everything we need.
I think, Commissioner Proctor, you want to weigh back in?
Mr. Chairman, you know, recycling was in style once upon a time, but it costs too much now. And as was pointed out on yesterday, I think we were told that we were at levels of 62%, which obviously we will never see perhaps again in our lifetime in terms of what we've done as a community. I want to compliment Mr. Williams from the Marpan Company, because his letter, I mean, he's approached us with so much class. And I think that, you know, Mother Jones magazine, the clarity and the crystal clarity of this three-page missive indicates to us the struggle, the change of the reality in this recycling business. But the fact that he's willing to stay at a loss, and he allows us to know that he's sustaining a deficit to be a corporate partner to our community until we figure which way we're going, is just the ultimate act of class to me. And I like to give, when I see it, and I think it's deserved, I believe that in this instance of notice and his articulation of the reasons why he's giving us notice to bow out, this is just a very classic document, and it's rare that our commission would receive such a clear and long-distance letter to show us that they wouldn't want to leave us holding the bag, so to speak. So I'm really wonderfully impressed by Mr. Williams, and I want to thank him, too, for getting our community an active, engaged, private partner to fulfill our interest in recycling. And this is tremendous. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the folks that might be watching at home, it may not have sat in our briefings, I'd want to ask the county administrator a quick question. What would be the likely scenario should we basically talk to our vendor and say, sorry, we've got a contract with you, we expect you to live up to the terms of the contract? You can't force a company to operate in the red for an extended period of time, and they've got some ways to exit out of the contract, and that's something that would likely happen here, correct?
Correct. What we'll bring back to you is a new rate that will essentially be sufficient to keep our current contractor in business, and I should say, and not profitable still. But that's what we'll be bringing back to you.
Well, I mean, should the service be discontinued? You know, you can't force a company to provide a service that's in the contract if they're basically discontinuing the service. And what that would mean to us as a county is that we would need to figure out a way to dispose of those recycled materials anyway, likely just going into, into the regular, the regular cycle and costing us additional funds that, that way as well.
Without this option, all other options are much by a multiplier more costly than the current vendor.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great point. I think for the people that are watching or haven't, haven't gotten, we are between a rock and a hard place, and this is going to be a Band-Aid, and we're going to have to take some real hard look at where we go long-term, and sustainability is financially unsustainable, so we've got to make some hard decisions. And that's the, hopefully we'll get somebody in here that can kind of give some direction. So we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion?
This, this, I want.
Yeah, Commissioner Proctor, I'm sorry.
A pedagogical inquiry. Mr. Tila, following nibbling at the Commissioner Minor's point, if we wanted to force a vendor to honor the contract, would they be able to put an argument here that these, that the market has changed, the terms are unbearable, and it's not like an act of God is towed down the plan, or lightning struck, or volcano? But wouldn't you say that if something occurred in China that has impacted the entire Western Hemisphere, would that be an unbearable circumstance for which they could argue their need to leave the contract?
That's what I would expect to see as an affirmative defense, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was just personal, I needed to understand it.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. It would be my intent that we get through the next one on the human services, and then the one, the pickup, Commissioner Dozier, that you hit there as a speaker, so we'll try and, if y'all are okay with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
On the next item, I'm going to recuse myself for the appearance of a conflict. Being as I, as I am recusing myself, I'm also going to step away from the dials.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, well, I will just then provide a brief intro to this item. As you can see before you, the item presents the Center for Health Equity's Human Services Needs Assessment Final Report. The report and the broader analysis provided in here offer, or here in, offer various options for the board consideration in our continuous efforts to improve our CHSP process and to optimize the county's limited human services funding to address the greatest needs in our community. In the executive summary, Commissioners, beginning on page two, you'll see an overview there that concludes with those options. As I've said to each of you in your briefings, I believe options one and two allow us to make progress in the immediate, and of course, we will continue with the city and the agencies to make additional improvements into the future. I want to thank the Center for Health Equity, in particular, Dr. Gary Van Lanningham, for their good work throughout this process. The consultants are here to answer any questions you might have, Commissioners, and as well as staff. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll give it back to you.
And we have a couple of speakers on the.
We do. Let me see, we've got two speaker items in now. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
First speaker, Amber Tyne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and Mr. County Administrator, for the opportunity to not only speak with you, but meet with you over the past couple of months about our concerns with the CHSP needs assessment. Amber Tyne, 2477 Tim Gimble Place. I represent United Partners for Human Services. We are a membership organization that has a longstanding collaborative partnership with the county and the city, specific to CHSP, but focused in strengthening and increasing the capacity for human service organizations in our community. Many of our members are here today, and I thank them for staying, so if you wouldn't mind just standing real quick. We would be remiss if we didn't take the opportunity to commend you all and your staff for your continued support of CHSP over the years. It's been an incredible partnership for 20-plus years, and we acknowledge that since its inception, it is important that we reevaluate how that funding is allocated. Given the recent work product that was delivered by the Center for Health Equity, we agree that Dr. Van Lanningham at FSU, with his assessment, and that the needs assessment before you should be rejected. We know that this process of conducting the needs assessment has not been an easy one, but a process we have felt was essential. This report made it clear that there is a need for greater coordination between our local funders and CHSP. Our members believe wholeheartedly that greater coordination will help funders to not only better allocate, but more effectively maximize our limited resources, which would in turn result in the greatest impact and outcomes for the programs and services funded. We believe our human services sector is uniquely positioned as the experts to help identify ways to address the problems facing our neighbors, while also leveraging greater collaboration among one another. While you have several options before you for consideration, we would respectfully request that you accept option five. And with the next CHSP funding cycle set to be open in the next few days, I hope you will recognize that any changes that are implemented based on the results of an incomplete needs assessment will further disrupt and adversely affect the human services sector. Thank you so much.
Name and address for the record, you know the drill. Thank you, Tim.
This is my first time, and you know, they always say you always remember your first time, and so, thank you. Tim Center, I'm at 309 Office Positive Drive. I'm the CEO of the Capillary Community Action Agency. And Marion, thanks for your service. Congratulations for all these people who want to take your seat. That's awesome. So, real quickly on this, we are one of the major providers of social services in this community, and I got to thank you for 20-plus years the county's been a leader in this space of helping fund social services. Your partnership with the city is incredibly valuable, and I really hope that you continue to do that. And you have indicated that through the work that you've done regarding wanting to have a needs assessment, because the needs assessment's important. At some point, you want to realign and make sure that you're meeting the needs of the community. But I don't think any of the needs assessment is worth anything until you, as a commission, actually decide what are the priorities that need to be made as a community. And then, once those priorities have been laid out to the public, at that point, I think the funding opportunities can then be evaluated according to how they can meet those priorities. Not just what the needs are, but what are the priorities that we can set as a community to change the quality of life for all residents? And so, I would certainly kind of encourage you guys to kind of punt on the current process where you are now, take up FSU and their offer of assistance, and to the city, to the county administrator, thanks so much for reaching out to FSU and asking for their input, because I thought their evaluation was spot-on, and that kind of matched what we saw as well. So, thanks for supporting social services. We appreciate the funding, and whatever we can do to help make your life easier. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
That's it for speakers. Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor, but he's out. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, now our wonderful executive directors from all of our agencies and others know a whole lot about waste collection. So, thanks for hanging in with us. And I'm sure a few people had to leave. So, appreciate that, and for your partnership, thank you. UPHS, Amber, Tim, your comments. I, I agree with the direction. I really, I think the item clearly articulates the need to take a pause and look at some additional information here. And I like the approach, Mr. County Administrator, that you all have laid out. And forgive me for pausing for a second, I was scrolling to the options here, because you had board direction listed on the first page there. So, within the options, as they're articulated, we've got option two, refine the outcome measures, the needs assessment report, funding cycles in 2020, FY 2027? Is that? I didn't see that number referenced. This is in option three. I just wanted some clarification on that, Ms. County Administrator, that we have a two-year funding cycle. How do we get so far out to 2027?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dozier, the 2027 is simply a reference to something that was covered in the analysis section, which spoke of how often you might want to do a needs assessment.
It's the needs assessment.
Right, so if we didn't do one here, you might want to reset in 2027, that's all.
Thank you. That's, I thought it was attached to an additional needs assessment, but I wasn't sure how it related to the funding. Okay. I, I am good with the options as articulated by our staff, except for the first one, and that is the promised zone. This is a little challenging for me, because dedicating our services to the promised zone was something that, I think, stemmed from an Obama administration program, that the city kind of hoped we would have some designation, but then didn't. So, the actual term promised zone, what it entailed, it no longer is germane to our community. I am concerned that with the really good information and the good work that has been done, we've gotten part of the way there. We've done the needs assessment, we need to do more work. I have never quite understood how we target money to one census tract or another when we have agencies that are providing services throughout the county, and there are pockets of poverty and people in need throughout the county. I, I want to know more about that, and I think this work group and this process is the perfect way to kind of dig into that a little bit more. I think we are helping people in those designated areas through providing services to our, or funding opportunities for our nonprofit agencies and all the work that they do. So, that option one, I just, I know that it could be perceived as not wanting to really focus on these critical areas.
It does.
And it's not, if, if.
It can be perceived, though.
It could be perceived, which is why I'm talking a little bit more, which some other colleagues and friends might understand. This is just keeping it the way it is for now, letting the process work through, and giving us some real strategies to target certain areas, certain populations, should we choose to do that. I think this is a little too quick. And lastly, on this point, I have one other question for the county administrator after this. I don't want to get us boxed in and locked into something that we think absolutely is going to solve all the problems, the promised zone designation, and have to struggle with that when we get the report back from this work group and everything else. I think it would be cleaner. We have waited a really long time for this needs assessment. We have not reflected on CHSP in this way in many, many years. And I served on joint planning board for many years, working through a lot of the recommendations. So I think that's my one caution on the options. With that, Mr. County Administrator, we could approve the motion, or the options two through five, that would be your recommendation, and not move forward with option one. Is that correct?
Commissioners, even though we gave the board latitude, again, you've got five viable options before you in our, in our estimation. My suggestion, and what I, and I'll just say what I've said to each commissioner in the, in briefings, is that if you went with one and two today, I believe you'd be making incremental process and not, if you will, punting entirely to, to the, and just simply maintaining the current funding scenario for FY '21 and '22. That's not to say that the other options before you are not viable options should the board wishes to give us that direction.
I'm sorry, but Mr. County Administrator, my, my question was, not moving forward on option one, is there any concern with making a motion for option two through five? Is that consistent? Or do we even need five? Because I would like to include the work group and move forward with a second review.
I think I hear what you're saying. They're not mutually exclusive. So you could, you could give any or all of those.
Do we, so, option five is to maintain.
With the exception of five.
With the exception of five.
Yes.
So it's options two, three, and four?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, I just needed a little guidance to unpack that. So, I'm going to make a motion for options two, three, and four. It dies for lack of a second. Okay. But I know I'm going on for a bit, but this, we've been waiting on this a long time, and there's another critical piece of this. I want to start with the opportunity zone, because I think that unpacks the options and, but going back into the data, this, this type of process has a lot of moving parts. And I, I understand why, through the peer review and the assessment of other counties, we have the report we have now, and we didn't get all of this information a year or so ago. So, I wanted to state that upfront, because this is, this is how we came to understanding how best to work through this process, and I appreciate that effort, Mr. County Administrator, you and your staff, and our partner agencies. However, I think there is a missing link here. In June of 2016, we approved an agenda item, and if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Is that right?
That's correct.
And to date, we have not implemented a system to aggregate the data. Prior to that point, they came in hard copies, so we couldn't capture the data for our CHSP applications. After that, it was online, but we don't yet have a system to aggregate that data in a secure way that would give us any information to use in this type of assessment. Is that right?
I'd have to defer to Shinkin on that. I'd have to ask Shinkin to clarify.
Good evening, commissioners. No, we are actually collecting data. We collect actual data as far as clients they serve, where they come from, their demographic information. That data is being collected, and it started being collected this two-year funding cycle.
Okay. This is why I asked the questions, Shinkin. So, we've been waiting, thank you very much, a number of years for this, and I know there was a lot of technical issues. So, we are finally at that point where the data is being collected.
Yes, every quarter, they're uploading it as part of, through the CHSP portal.
And this data can help inform that work group going forward. It's a new data set that we did not have during the needs assessment or anything else. Is that right?
No, that data was shared, the issue was that that data was being collected during the needs assessment process.
We did, exactly. We didn't have a good sample size of that data, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I want to, thank you, Shinkin, very much. I wanted to stick on this point for a minute, because the data that informs this. We've heard some concerns about not enough data. We have a lot of different assessments in this community. We have a data set coming into us from our agencies, and I've been really eager to see this system get started. So, I'm thrilled to hear it is. I just want to make sure, Mr. County Administrator, that that data is provided to the work group going forward, and we should have at least a year or two during their process so they can utilize that as part of their assessment. Is that right?
If there is a work group formed, which is option four.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. If there is a work group formed, okay. Then I will say this. If my motion died because of the promised zone issue, which I understand, I feel very strongly, we either leave CHSP as it has always been and is, and it is a decent system, but it could be a whole lot better, or we move forward with the work group. I mean, that is our option to continue improving the system for all of our benefits. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question for the county administrator. With option one, should that new promised zone category be created? If this option, if that option were to pass, would county staff basically develop some options, some funding options for the county's role in that, and then bring it back to us for consideration?
We would. We would define that category allowable, the grant proposals, that type of thing, and we'd bring all of that back to you during the budget process, as we mentioned.
We've talked about 32304, and specifically, well, because of the census tracts, the high poverty census tracts that are alongside, just to the west of the current existing poverty promised zone. So, I mean, I think it'd be helpful, but Commissioner Dozier, I wanted to kind of go through that question before I seconded your motion. If we do the FSU Ask You School Working Group, they could take a look at the promised zone extension and make that part of their deliberation. So, there's no statute of limitations on a second of a motion, so I'll second your motion. Actually, there is a statute of limitations.
Mr. County Administrator, yeah.
It has to be in the moment. You could read it.
I'll make a motion for options two, three, and four, and thank you, Commissioner Minor. And I would love to have the work group focus particularly on the promised zone and other things. I just don't want to limit us. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with the promised zone and how it works, I mean, with my work at Second Harvest, but that's the Second Harvest perspective. It was easy to have service delivery points within the promised zone, but not every agency has that, has that luxury in terms of how it delivers services. So, I will second that motion for options two, three, and four.
Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Lindley, Commissioner Proctor, anything? All right. I feel that...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I've given away, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am very much believing that option one should be included in here. I think that options one and two are sufficient to carry the weight of which the evidence comes in. I'm amazed, no, I'm not. It strikes me that the previous item, Commissioner Dozier argued she was willing to go up on a 28% increase for everyone in the community to pick up trash, and to make sure that we did not get the number of complaints, and, you know, to satisfy the complaints that were offered. It was worth to her, just based on complaints, going up 28% to satisfy complaints for trash. We have the most comprehensive data that has been submitted to this board on CHSP, the Human Services Partnership Needs Assessment, that is not based upon whatever the system of complaining might be for trash pickup, but this is actually US Census data information. This is all kinds of descriptive economic indicators, thorough 257 pages of a crystal-clear outline, intellectual engagement of the area, in areas of which are involved more intensely with human services. I found it interesting, for instance, that one of the, one of the pictures of the economic differences in the community for Census Tract 2413, which is Foshale Lake, the Child's High School area, the median household income there, $119,600. That's found on page 901 of 1191. The median income of an area like 32304, which cites Census Tract 21.03, is Godby High School, Mission San Luis. The median household income is $25,000. For the Gretchen Everhart School to San Luis Road, Census Tract number 21.04, household income is $25,552. And the other areas that numbers are more horrifying than that, when you look at the Proctor Honda Cell High School area, $18,300. Oakell with the stadium, $14,000. I mentioned a lot of students there, but all the data is there. And what the data demonstrates to those who understand is that there is a need for services. Commissioner Dozier has invoked the name of President Obama, and I like to believe that you don't believe that just to say the name President Obama, that something was introduced, a promised zone by President Obama, that inherently it makes it bad. I don't know why she did that, but it came out under President Obama. Woo-woo. I think that that was a tremendous effort to speak to areas that we're trying to address, 32304. To, and I know that when you talk about that area, there are other indicators, Mr. Chairman, that this commissioner has worked in over the past several months, looking specifically into this. And I think that out of all of these results, all of this information, is difficult for us to ignore what's been put in front of us through a lot of effort. And you're right, I think that the observation of how much time has been put in, but one of the things that time reflects here is how thorough the work has been. And the thoroughness of the work points to a commission that ought to be humanly engaged, empathetic, and to know that here in the community, that Harvard University said in 2015, is our nation's most economically divided in the United States, and that our Florida Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, has said that 32304 is the state of Florida's most impoverished. And for us to ignore option one in the face of that continuing data, supported by that which we have in front of us, friends, I don't know how we could miss the obligation to try and provide for the health, safety, and welfare and the betterment of these areas to expand. The power, the option, the opportunity for us to do more in the face of data that has been clarified, that is our community, and to want to do more for the differences of household income areas, we have that chance.
Would you like to make a motion?
I ask that you all, or substitute motion for options one and two.
We have a motion, and we have a second. I've got Commissioner Lindley, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Dozier, and Commissioner Jackson, so, and we've got 40 minutes, and we're back here for public hearing. Dinner's sitting back there, so I'm just putting you on notice. So, Commissioner Minor, Dozier, Jackson, Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Proctor, I totally understand your points about the promised zone and about the 32304 census tracts. In my previous occupation, I spent a lot of time, a lot of time, looking at those numbers. And I've been to a number of your 32304 summits. We need to do something about those census tracts, and I think everyone here at the DIAS agrees. I want to do something about the census tracts. I want to do something tangible about those parts of this community that are truly suffering. The reason why initially I didn't include option one in my discussion with Commissioner Dozier right here is because I didn't want to necessarily bind the working group toward the extension of the promised zone being the solution. If they're going to convene, if they're going to get together and talk about the needs assessment and the data, and figure out what options they could present back to us, I didn't want to tie their hands by having the extension of the promised zone be the only thing that they could do, because we passed it here tonight. We need to do something. Maybe option one is what we end up doing. I want us to do option one or something else in the next few months, because to not do something is, I think, failing our obligations in the county commission regarding those parts of the community. So, I want to do something. The reason why I did not support option one in Commissioner Dozier's motion, because of that reason. I want the working group to have a clean slate from which they can maybe propose option one, as well as other options that they might think are better options than that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Minor, I really appreciate that, and you have been steeped in this. You are one of those agencies, and I so appreciate your comments. It's what I hear from some other agencies. It's easier for some nonprofits to distinguish between certain census tracts and who they're helping than it is for others. Just to clarify this, Commissioner Proctor, I referenced a Obama program that we didn't, that wasn't awarded to the city. It was a good program. I wish it had been awarded to the city. It just wasn't, and we adopted the name anyhow. So, it's a, it's a program that's disconnected. That's the only reason why I mention that. And as Commissioner Minor just said, I actually want to redouble our efforts and do as much as we can with the limited dollars we have as effectively as possible. Now, your motion for options one and two do not include an additional study, a deep dive. We're just, we're where we are. We work with our agencies to refine the outcome measures, things like that. That's good. That's what we've been doing for the last few years. Our agencies, the people I've heard from, want to do this second work group to reflect and actually expand, and so that we can do more going forward. So, I absolutely, option four, as Commissioner Minor rightly said, I think it gives us the ability to tell this new work group, should we move forward, as the county administrator said, to look at everything, and how can we be as impactful as possible in 32304 and other areas where we have, if it's just a street with very, and low income, or people who are having a hard time and need help. So, I actually want us to be able to do as much as possible, which is why I think we need to spend a little more time, do a real deep dive, and not lock us into something that came about without any data, without anything like that. Now, the census tract has a lot of data. I'm just saying, the way the promised zone has been constructed and funded through CHSP, I'm not sure it's doing the job it's supposed to do. So, Mr. County Administrator, I want a question about my original motion. I wanted you to walk me through some of the options there, because as much as I read the details of this, refining the, option two, refining the outcome measures presented in the needs assessment with stakeholders, that sounded like a good idea, but that's kind of redundant to option four, correct? We either do it with our stakeholders, or we do it through the work group. Is that correct?
Yes, and I think the option two is just a much narrower scope than option four.
Right, but we don't need both of them. Is that correct?
Probably not. You could, again...
Because option four would do the same thing, and then four.
Would include that as well. It would just be much broader, and over a longer period of time.
And the way I framed it, that we may be able to do more for 32304 and other census tract, other individuals, if we did a deeper dive and refined our categories and everything, that's really what the peer review is telling us, right? That we may be able to become more effective and have measurement data and everything else.
That would certainly be part of their purview.
Right. But that's what Dr. Van Lanningham was indicating, was that if we took this next step, that it would help us further refine the categories, get our funding right, and help more people, hopefully.
Yes, and he was making that assessment of all the categories.
Yes.
Yes.
So, option four would allow us to keep pushing forward to be as robust a study of this as possible.
That's correct.
Okay. If my good second will be amenable to this, I'd like to revise my motion to options three and four, so we don't have any redundancies.
I think we've got a substitute motion.
We do, but I'm, but if it fails, we're going back to the original, so I just want to refine the original.
Well, let's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We got to vote the substitute motion up or down.
May I just say that if, what Commissioner Dozier says, that she's offering options three and four as an addendum to my motion of one and two?
No, sir. I'm sorry. My motion stands. I'm eliminating option two, because it's redundant. We don't need option two and option four. Option four gives us the robust study. So, my motion is options three and four, your motion's options one and two.
Can I ask the question? Option four is asking for a 20, I'm sorry, option three is asking for a new study in 2027, and what is failed about the current study? What is it that troubles you? And what's, what are the deficits about this study that we waited for so long that we can't get started? I mean, if I can ask.
Yeah, but let's be brief. We're going to run out of time here pretty quick. Go ahead.
The, the study gave us a good amount of information, but the recommendation from our staff, from others who reviewed the study, was this is good, but you need to look at more data to refine the categories. If I'm saying this incorrectly, Mr. County Administrator, please correct me, but that was my take on it, and that's why I wanted to do more based on that recommendation.
And, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. And just to add to that, Commissioner Proctor, what I was suggesting with options one and two is that you can do that now. It doesn't make the big categorical across-the-board changes that were contemplated with the study. It just allows you to take action now relative to the promised zone category, and it gives, it also recognized that the human services agencies indicated that they didn't feel like the, the outcome measures are, were ready for prime time, and we acknowledge that, and that's option two, just that we would take more time to work with them and not put them in place in the current year. And again, one and two just simply are, that we thought you could do that without accepting the whole study and making all of the broad categorical changes that, that it presented.
Okay, so...
If I may, a clarification for that. So, basically, Mr. County Administrator, options one and two, it's status quo. It's kind of as if we didn't do the needs assessment. Good information, but it doesn't impact any changes.
And I would take great exception to that.
I thought that's what you said, that's why I asked for clarification.
No, no, yes, yeah, no. I was saying that options one creates a new category for the promised zone, targeted funding in the promised zone, which would come back to you in the budget process, where you would determine how much additional money you put into the promised zone. you would determine how much additional money you put into the promised zone, as well as additional monies that you might deem appropriate for CHSP in general. And again, it would allow you to also move forward with the, the continued work on the outcome measures.
Okay, so Commissioner Jackson, who is in the promised zone, you're up.
Thank you. I'll be brief. With great respect to Commissioner Dozier for three and four, but I would be negligent for a lifetime of work to ignore the families that I serve in 32304 and the adjacent 32310, where one out of every two children under the age of 18 are from a home in poverty. And seldomly do we ride together on things, Commissioner Proctor, but in this situation, I stand by option one and two.
I've been trying to get you to walk with me, Commissioner.
All right. I would, I would weigh in and follow Commissioner Jackson's suit. I think at some point, there's something that's called paralysis by analysis, and at some point, we have to kind of move forward in constantly improving it, but I worry that we just kind of waffle. So we have a, Commissioner Lindley, you want to weigh back in?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, which is Commissioner Proctor's for options one and two. Substitute motion, pardon me.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I know this is a labor. But, Mr. County Administrator, this means that we will not change any of the other categories, not change the funding structure at all. This is, this is rejecting all of the reasons why we did the RFP. Is that right? Because it only makes the one change in the promised zone. Is that right?
That's correct. It would only make the change.
So, analysis by paralysis?
I get, I hear.
It, that's not it. It's just not moving as far as we could. Thank you.
Okay, so we have substitute motion, options one and two, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to two with Commissioner Maddox out of. We have one more. Let's just knock that out if we can real quick, that we have one speaker, which is item number 21, that we pushed off earlier because we thought we might have a speaker.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and just pardon me while, while the, I catch up to the technology. Commissioners, item number 21 is an agenda item that seeks your approval to award a bid for the Raymond Tucker Road drainage improvements. This is a project to reduce chronic flooding during storm events impacting several neighborhoods. We're recommending the lowest response of bidder who did meet both NBE and WNBE aspirational targets for this job, which is options one and two.
Who recommends, Mr. Chairman?
One speaker on this.
We're going to let, yeah, we thought we'd let the speaker speak, and then we could get.
We'll draw to recommendation.
Yes, go ahead.
Keith Hetrick.
Name and address for the record.
Yep. Keith Hetrick, I live in Weeping Willow Way, 6306. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for indulging us. I'm not going to take a lot of your time. You're probably familiar with this item. We've sent letter out to y'all. I just want to express our support for this project and that we really appreciate all the work of your staff, the county administrator, particularly your engineering staff, and all the hard work that Commissioner Dozier has spent on this. I've been involved in this project for nearly 10 years, and it's good to see it positioned today to go, and we ask for your approval of the site. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor.
He lives on Weeping Willow Way. Guitarist did a song called "Willow Weep for Me," Wes Montgomery, and this is a very pretty song. I recommend that you listen to "Willow Weep for Me."
Clip. Thank you. You can come back at every meeting and, and address us like that. We love that occasionally.
Thank you.
Not good news. We have a motion, Commissioner Dozier?
Yeah, motion for staff recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I just wanted to, this issue has been extremely complicated. Three neighborhoods, not just Wynwood. Keith, thank you for hanging in here. I know you've been here a long time for, a thank you for everyone, so appreciate you doing that on behalf of your neighborhood and the board. This is exceptionally challenging place. We have changed our rules, so we don't even let people build neighborhoods like this anymore with one entrance. The neighborhood has, you know, rightly been concerned about the speed, but I just so appreciate how constructively you all have worked with us and the staff. Mr. County Administrator, your staff has done an exceptional job. I'm sure all of you, all of us do not want to hear about the bridge project again. Brent, I'm looking at you, and you're, I know. We want to move past it, and I'm thrilled to be here. So thank you for your patience. Thank you for the work.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindley, did you want to weigh in? No. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favors, yeah, you were up here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We are adjourned until 6:00 p.m. when we have public hearings. Sorry. Well, I mean.